I think it's about that time. I will go ahead and call this Monday, January 4th, 2021, Meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and I hope you had a wonderful holiday season and I hope you have a safe and enjoyable 2021. With that said, we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance and let's see. Dave Taylor, would you mind leading us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, this nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. I would like to thank the public for participating this evening remotely. I know it's certainly challenging at times, but we'll do our best to work through any technical issues that may arise this evening. With that said, we will start with communications from the public. And just for the record, we do have three public hearings this evening, so if you are attending to speak to one of the three public hearings advertised, I just ask that you please wait until I call those individual hearings and they should be up probably in the next five to 10 minutes based on the number of communications from the public that we did receive. With that said, I'll go ahead and ask Michelle to please coordinate our communications from the public this evening.
Okay, so if you would like to speak regarding something other than what's on the public hearing, please raise your hand by hovering over your name in the participants' list, which is to the right of your screen. And you should see a hand icon. Click that. You can also, if you're on the phone, star three on your phone pad will raise your hand. Or the three dots at the bottom of the page, next to the red X, you can right-click that and you can also find the hand icon there. Just to let you know, for best participation, we would suggest that you download the WebEx app because that will give you the best participation. So if you are having issues, please leave the meeting, download the application and then rejoin the meeting. John, I don't see anybody who has raised their hand.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. We'll move on to item four of our agenda, which is communications from volunteer boards. Just reviewing the list of participants on this evening. I don't see anyone from the general public. It's probably here to report on a volunteer board, so I'll just go straight to council. Any volunteer board reports from the council this evening and just please raise your hand and go ahead and provide your report. Counselor Sweeney?
Just to let the council know, there are no matters on the park board agenda for this month, and so we're not going to be holding a meeting.
Thank you, Frank. Further reports from the council? Not seeing any. We'll move on to item five of our agenda, which is our consent agenda. We do have minutes included in the packet from the December 7th special meeting, as well as the regular session, as well as minutes from the December 14th, 2020 special session. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
Mayor Mulfield, this is Rebecca. Yes, I have. I'd like to make two corrections to the minutes. And the first one is for the special session, 12/7/20, under Section 7, Public Hearings, under Section A, which should read, "Counselor Davis recuses." R-E-C-U-S-E-S. And then the second one is on page 36, and there's a period after D-L blank that was not there. Otherwise, everything was great. Michelle, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Norton. Further discussion? Michelle, roll call.
Counselor Quinnell? Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
Favor.
Counselor Hannon?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Consent agenda does pass unanimously, which brings us quickly to our three public hearings. We'll start with item 6A of the agenda, which will be consideration of a request from Tanner Babcock for a conditional use permit located at 2119 Houston Drive to construct an accessory apartment over a new garage. The property is zoned WER, which is our state residential district, and this will be WCUP 20-17.
All right. Just gonna share my screen real quick here.
Thanks, Tara.
All right, so there's a site plan. My project's located at 2119 Houston Drive. It's just a tiny bit south of Houston Point, and it's located kind of northeast across the street from some of the lakefront properties there. Tanner Babcock, who's with us today, is requesting a CUP for a new accessory apartment above a new garage near the rear of her lot tucked behind what will be a new single-family home. The lot's currently vacant. The new structure, which conforms to our development standards for accessory apartments, will be a two-car garage with an apartment above. The structure has a footprint that's less than 600 square feet, which will be confirmed at the time of the building permit, which also allows for a minimum of six-foot setbacks on the side and rear property lines. The lot provides enough space to accommodate all three required parking spaces for the home and apartment, all on-site, with the identified spaces located both on the proposed paved driveway and inside the proposed garage, which will be accessed from the same driveway as the future main house. The lot we're looking at is designated WER, which is a state residential, and the growth policy definition for this area is suburban residential, which is compatible with the current use. Adjacent land uses to the northwest and south are also a state residential, and land to the east is designated WSR, or suburban residential, which also has accessory apartments as a conditional use. And then just a little bit of background on the area. This area was somewhat recently annexed. I'm sure a lot of you remember. And then rezoned with city zoning in 2018. But the prior county zoning did also allow accessory dwelling units. I think it was R2, which is one family limited residential in the county zoning. And based on that, they could get a CUP through an administrative permit and they could be rented. The project was noticed in the pilot and a mailing was sent to adjacent landowners. We received quite a few comments from a number of neighboring households, all against the project. That can be found in your packets. Definitely recommend taking a look at some of those. And then we also had three neighbors show up at the December 27th public hearing at Planning Board to speak against the project. To summarize, kind of both the written and the verbal comments, the neighbors stated concerns of increased density and a possibility of higher traffic volumes due to a new precedent set in the neighborhood with more accessory apartments. And then they also stated a number of concerns about the impact of the presence of rental properties on the current character of Houston Drive. Again, those specifics can be found in the public comment and then also the Planning Board minutes of your packets. And then back to the application itself. The property will be deed restricted, which will ensure the accessory unit can't be rented unless the owner is residing in the primary residence. Tanner was also at the December Planning Board meeting and commented that she's been a long-term Whitefish resident, and she does intend to live in the main home on the lot once it's built. But even if she eventually decides to sell, that deed restriction does cover the property for future owners. Additionally, as a reminder, short-term rentals are not allowed in this zone, so the property won't be eligible for Airbnbs or other types of vacation rentals. Accessory apartments are allowed in all of our residential zones throughout the city and do share the same restrictions. After public comment at the December meeting, the Planning Board unanimously adopted the findings of fact, included in the staff report, and then there are seven recommended conditions of approval. And at the end of the day, they recommended the application for approval at city council. So those are kind of all the details I have for you this evening. You can kind of see the site plan here, the main house there in the front with the kind of small garage and accessory apartment above, all connected by that driveway. And I believe there was kind of a small carport there as well. And with that, I can take any questions. And I know, again, Tanner's here as well.
Thanks very much, Rebecca. I'll start with the council. Any questions for Tara? We'll start with Frank.
Nothing. Thank you. Good report.
Ryan?
No questions at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ryan. Steve?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And Ben?
Questions? Thank you.
How about Rebecca?
Yeah, I just have one clarification. One of the neighbors submitted some pictures of a SWAT team event and all that. That was not this property before it was torn down. It was across the street, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I couldn't understand the... I guess I didn't understand what the relevance was, other than they were worried that that rental would be similar to this. But is that the only reason they brought it up?
As far as I understand, correct. I don't know if... I think it was Brad Bulkeley that had sent that in. And I'm not seeing him on here right now, but if he wishes to clarify, he's welcome to.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that was very frightening, I'm sure, for the neighborhood. But I didn't think that it was at this location, and so I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Otherwise, nope, no questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Finally, Andy. Any questions or comments?
No questions. Thanks, Tara.
Thank you, Andy. And we will go to our public hearing, and I will ask Michelle to please see if there are any individuals that are here this evening to comment on this issue, topic.
Okay, so if you would like to speak towards this agenda item, please raise your hand by hovering over your name in the participants' list to the right of your page. You'll find the hand icon. Just click on that. You can also do it by star three on your phone pad if you're joining by phone. Or the three dots at the bottom of the screen, next to the red X, right-click and find the hand icon. You would do the same to lower your hand after you're done speaking. And so we'll just give this a couple minutes so people can find where their icon is and their name. Dave, on place. Did you want to speak towards this agenda item or another agenda item? You can unmute your phone, your screen.
When Mayor Mulfield was speaking, I think he was too far away from the microphone. I couldn't hear what this particular issue was, if this was the agenda that was mentioned in the paper about the mask ordinance.
I apologize for that, Dave. No, we're considering item 6A, which is a conditional use permit for property out on Houston Drive. The face coverings consideration will be our third public hearing this evening. We should get to that in about 10 minutes.
Okay, so with that, John, I don't see anybody else who has raised their hand.
Thanks very much, Michelle. With that said, I will close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion, or preferably a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve WCUP 20-17, the findings of fact in the staff report, and the seven conditions of approval as recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Quinnell. Further discussion or comments on your motion, Frank?
No, it was, quite frankly, it was an excellent report, and I think it answered all my questions. Thank you.
Steve?
Again, well, the Planning Board passed this, I believe unanimously. And so I think that record stands. I do want to just make one additional comment about that this is the first time we've seen, in my recollection, an accessory apartment in WR1 Zone, which was... or not WR1 Resort. What's the... Tara, what's the land you said?
A state residential.
State residential, WER. So I don't think it's a bad idea. I just, I think that's an important thing to consider moving forward, potentially, if people think that, you know, people might not understand that a state residential would not allow something like this. But I don't think it's a... I think this is a great project and it's needed. But it is our first one, as far as I can recollect, in the WER Zone.
Thanks, Steve.
Mayor?
Rebecca.
Okay. I just, I think it will be, I think it will be fine. I understand that the neighbors have had some bad experiences with rentals out there. But if I really liked the design of the house, I think it will actually enhance the neighborhood. And we have been doing these accessory apartments all over town to try to get more housing available for the community, which is a big problem. And one of the conditions, just to remind the public, is that the owner must live on-site. It must be their primary residence. It's not a short-term rental. Whoops, Rosie's barking in the back. So I'm voting for... Normally, I have some qualms about voting for a project if most of the citizens surrounding the property are against it. But I think some of the concerns that were brought up concerned other property management and not this site. So I don't think it will impact traffic, and I think it will actually enhance the neighborhood, since there's so many large lots out there. So I will be voting for it.
Thank you, Rebecca. Further comments from the council? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinnell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Hannon?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks, Tara, for the report tonight. And that brings us on to item 6B, which will be Resolution 21-1, our first for 2021, a resolution approving an agreement with Montana Waste Systems Incorporated doing business as North Valley Refusers for solid waste collection and disposal. Dana?
Good evening, Mayor Mulfield and City Council. On page 96 of your packet is the resolution for your consideration to adopt and allow myself to execute the contract with North Valley Refusers. Actually, it's Montana Waste Systems, DBA, North Valley Refusers, DBA Republic Services. So this evening, I will refer to them as Republic Services to keep it clear as our customers in the city recognize them as Republic Services. So since 2004, when we stopped operating our own garbage hauling services, the city contracted with North Valley Refusers for the collection and disposal of solid waste for both residential and commercial accounts within city limits. Montana Waste Systems, that was doing businesses, North Valley Refusers, with our last contract, merged with Republic Services a couple years ago. And so with the existing agreement that we have in place, that will terminate March 31st of this year. And the city has been working with Republic since early 2020 to work through the details of a new agreement. We have successfully reached an agreement that staff is happy to propose for the council's consideration this evening. And I'm just going to go over a few of the highlights. The contract includes a five-year term upon execution. And then following that, there is an automatic renewal for an additional five-year period unless notice is provided by either party. So it is a five-year agreement, but because the city could, before, 60 days before it reaches the next five-year term, request to cancel it. Billing for garbage services in the new agreement would be completed by the city. So in 2016, we shifted billing for garbage services to North Valley Refusers or Republic Services now. And in doing so, a lot of our residents and businesses started getting an additional bill. The garbage service is no longer included on the water and sewer bills. It seemed to streamline the process back then. However, as we're moving forward with moving accounts into owner, property owner, or property manager names instead of renters' names, we are bringing the garbage billing back in so that it is cleaner for both the property managers and those that operate their homes as a rental, so they have one bill to manage, but also because it becomes a much easier billing process. We are, with the contract as drafted, billing would be taken over starting March 16th of 2021. And so it would be on the April 2021 utility bill, so the bill coming up in April, you would then see a garbage line on your bill. And it would be for any amounts incurred from March 16th and moving forward. If Republic Services had collected payment for those dates, they will be the ones that will be processing the refunds to their customers for that time period. So we will make sure that there are no duplicate billings for any services during this transition period. The third item that I believe is really important for this, well, I should, let me back up on the billing part of it. Back in February of 2020, the city council adopted updated rules and regulations for the water, sewer, and garbage utilities. And I did touch on that briefly with the accounts changing from the renters' names back to the owners' or property manager's names. And that resolution that was adopted in February of 2020 will now become effective with the signing of this agreement. It actually had a date that allowed for a later effective date because we wanted to get this contract negotiated. Unfortunately, with COVID, it definitely delayed that process. So the third item, though, that's in this contract is the central recycling site management. Currently, in the contract, Republic Services will continue to service the central recycling site at its current location until June 30th, 2021, at no cost to the city. One of the issues that have come up, has come up with the central recycling site, is that the costs of recycling materials has gone up. What used to be a moneymaker for North Valley Refusers is now costing Republic Services anywhere from, you know, $8,000 to $10,000 a month to actually recycle the materials. And so they're losing money on it. Because of that, we decided to pull the recycling out of this contract because it is not dictated by the state on a specific territory. So garbage hauling, solid waste hauling in Montana, there are specific territories that companies get based on a permit that they receive. Recycling is not managed the same way. So that is going to go out with an RFP for management of the central recycling site, and we'll have that come to you at your second meeting in January for your approval to move forward. We do anticipate, though, that Republic Services will submit a proposal for that RFP. And remember, we had a meeting not too long ago talking about that also includes design of the new site at the wastewater treatment plant property location. So, but we are, we did increase the recycling site management from, which would stop March 31st through at least June 30th, to give us some additional time. The contract also includes an annual automatic increase of 3% each year, and this would be for rates charged by Republic Services to the city. And it's based on what the customer, our customers are actually receiving as service. This is a reasonable 3% annual increase. When you look at the CPI for garbage and trash services, it's actually has some really strong swings in it. One year was 7%, the next was like 2%. And so when I looked over a five-year period, the 3% was an average over the last five years and would be appropriate moving forward. And that also has been in the contract since 2004, I believe. One thing I did want to bring to your attention is mandatory animal-resistant containers. I know that that's a very important topic, but, and one that we're still looking into and working with FWP. We actually just had some maps created, and we're working on that still with Republic Services. But that we would see as an amendment to this contract. We'd really like to move forward. The billing side of garbage, mandatory animal-resistant containers comes at a cost, so we believe that that will take a much longer process. The five-year proposed contract does, well, it provides for a subminister billing. We have adequate staffing already available to manage that, really based on that transition of accounts from renters to owners. And the rates that are proposed by Republic Services are included in that agreement as Exhibit A and in the packet, and that's what the city will be charged based on the customers that we have signed up. It does not include the administration fee that the city will have to charge, and we'll bring our rates of what we will actually be charging our customers to you in February. It'll have to be a public hearing through our normal rate-setting process. But what we want to ensure, and we've worked with Republic to come to rates that both provides the adequate administration fee for the city and provides the adequate, you know, fee for their service to where we will not see a rate increase for garbage customers that receive garbage service in the city limits. So we will review garbage rates like we do water and sewer now annually, even though there's a set 3% fee in the contract. Our administration fee may change as well, or there may be years where we actually can not pass on the full increase because we may have reserves on hand. So staff respectfully recommends the city council approved proposed Resolution 2101, approving an agreement with Montana Waste Systems Incorporated, DBA North Valley Refusers, DBA Republic Services for solid waste collection and disposal.
Thanks for watching, Dana. I'll start with the council. Any questions for Dana? And we'll begin with Frank. Frank, I think you're muted.
Excuse me. I thought I had unmuted myself, but thank you. I know this is a, this is a contract that I'll say is, it's, it's, well, it's a hard contract. I'm looking at this contract, and I know it's based on some others, and we made some changes to it. But I want to go through a couple of the things that really kind of bothered me or irritated me just from a contractual point of view in terms of a business deal. I appreciate your explanation on the annual adjustment of rates. The way I'm reading this is that they may increase up to 3%. Do they have to justify that increase?
There is no requirement for justification.
So they can simply say, okay, I want 3%, and they get it regardless?
Correct. And that's how it's been for the past two contracts.
Okay. The next provision, which is change in law adjustments, it says here that they can increase rates for services as a result of any increase in costs incurred by a company due to virtually anything. Are those increases, are the reason those laws of adjustments, are they governed by the 3% or not?
Dana, do you want me to take it? Frank, you know, no, they're not necessarily governed by the 3%. And when this was originally proposed, we had a problem with this provision as well.
And when this was originally proposed, we had a problem with this provision as well. So that's why we have the language in there that says upon mutual agreement. That language is not present when it was initially proposed, we had a problem with that. So if they can justify those changes, then that was something that that would be something that we'd have to agree upon with them. They can't just unilaterally do it.
Okay, so the preface upon mutual agreement, they're going to have to justify those kinds of of increases.
Correct.
And Frank, those ones really lead to, you know, we don't control the solid, we don't control the landfill. And so the county could come in and increase, you know, all of a sudden start charging dumping fees for Republic. They don't at this time, but they could. And that's where they're going to, that would be something where they bring it forward to us and, you know, that their costs went up due to the county's costs or now charging for refuse.
Okay, thank you. Let me go down here. Section eight point four, we talk about payment. The city shall pay each of the company's invoices without offset. They don't deliver the service, they don't deserve to get paid. And so we should be able to deliver an offset. Yes, no, am I missing something?
Yeah, so it generally I would say yes, that's the case. But in the city of Whitefish, it's mandatory garbage service regardless of service being provided. So we charge the customers regardless of a can being there because it's mandatory garbage service for all properties. So because of that, what that actually refers to, though, is that, you know, if we haven't collected it yet, or, you know, even the service hasn't been provided, they're going to still be charged for those accounts. That's how it's always operated in the city. You guys could look at your garbage ordinance if you don't want to have mandatory garbage service. But right now, as it stands, it's mandatory for all properties to have garbage service.
No, and I appreciate that, Dana. I guess my my question is, is that, yeah, we're, everybody's required to get it. But for whatever reason, they fall and they don't get it done. And the customer calls us because we're the billing entity and say, they picked my garbage up. This says we can't offset.
So we, they will pick it up. So they'll be dealing, customers will be dealing directly with Republic for any service issues. Say they they missed picking up that container. That goes direct to them. That's not something that they're going to bill us for like an extra pickup. One of the, you know, what they're, what they're wanting here is that we're not going to offset any amounts that we collectable. Because we we actually have full collectability in garbage because it's an amount that we can put on a tax bill after each year. We can look and see if they haven't paid their bill, it now can be put on a tax bill. So we are collectible there a hundred percent. So we actually have also, so if somebody has an extra pickup, they will bill us for that and then we bill the customer. So, you know, I I understand, you know, that if they don't pick it up, they can't. And and they've already, we've charged the customer, they charge us for it and they don't pick it up. They would be in the wrong and they would have to go pick it up free of charge. There's no question there.
Frank, and I'd also add, you know, if there, I mean, that's a twenty-day provision. If you get down to nine, I mean, if if they're for some reason not abiding by the terms of the contract by picking up garbage, you know, we have remedies as well, so.
Okay, and then another question I had, there's a provisions in section thirteen, equipment access. The city shall be liable for all loss or damage to such equipment for normal, except for normal wear and tear or loss or damage resulting from company's handling of the equipment. City and customers shall use the equipment for the proper intended purposes, shall not overload, yappity yappity. Customers shall fully reimburse company for any and all claims resulting from personal injuries, death, or other loss or damage to property, including the equipment, arising out of the use, operation, or possession of the equipment by the customers. That's a little over the top. And then says the company shall not be responsible for any damages to any pavement, curbs, or other driving surfaces resulting from companies providing services under this agreement.
Yeah, so that one, that one we definitely had challenges with. But when you think about what equipment they're referring to, it's a garbage can. We have had customers put hot ashes in a garbage can and completely destroy them. And they know they're not to put hot ashes in there. With our, we did have it where the city will be holding all customers liable for any losses or claims. And this is how our practice has always been. If there is damage to a container that requires replacement, that will automatically, you know, be charged to the customer and become collectible on our side. I know that Chad, yeah, we, I mean, the, the, we can, Chad Bowers on here, he's represents Republic Services. And maybe he could provide a little bit more insight into that and the reasonings for that.
And I don't mean to be flippant, I understand the reasoning for it, I just don't think it's fair.
Sure. You know, it was one that we felt was low risk on the pavement and driving surfaces. Obviously, they're worried about driving on our roads and damaging them. I don't know that they will damage them under this agreement by any means, by just servicing them. And and I I believe some of that language was already in our prior contracts. But I, yeah, I guess at this point, I know it's not the best section. I don't think that either Angie, Angie or I really liked it. But we are their customer. And then all the residents are actually our customers. So that's why it says they're holding the city liable because.
And Frank, I agree with Dana. I don't know that we were necessarily super comfortable with this section. But if if we're collecting, I mean, if we're collecting for the city, truthfully, you know, the Republic doesn't really have any contractual relationship with the customer where they could hold them liable. So if if we're, you know, if we're collecting the bills, it seems, I guess, appropriate that we should be holding the customer liable and assessing on their tax bill if they do damage the property. And again, I think Chad could speak a little bit better to their concerns with respect to damaging city right-of-way or, you know, city pavement.
Dana, would you like me to talk about that right now or would you like me to wait until after there are other questions answered?
No, I think you could definitely answer that question now.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council folks. Mr. Sweeney, I I think that there's maybe some confusion in how that is written because I I want to thoroughly respect what you're saying, what you're saying about it. And it can be a little bit confusing. And what we're really getting at is, you know, if it's our fault and we drive over a curb, we drive into somebody's yard, and we damage grass or off the pavement, you know, we're going to take responsibility and liability for that. What we're asking is, you know, let's say that you did a paving job and you only laid two inches of asphalt instead of four or whatever may happen, it was not the right mix. And it, no fault of ours, the street is damaged. We, we're not going to be held liable for that portion of it. But anything we would do, and I don't want to say maliciously, but it, you know, accidents do happen and it, roads get slick and and we do on occasion slide off the road and do some damage to property. But we certainly have, are responsible for the liability of that side of it. You know, as far as the cans, I think Angie and Dana both stated it. You know, the city is our customer moving forward with this contract, not every resident of the city of Whitefish. They're your customer at that point. And and that's why that's in there on the liability side. If somebody damages a can or burns it to the ground. You know, we live in Montana, these things get brittle in the cold and they break. We replace those for free. We're not going to charge a customer for normal, what we call normal wear and tear. It's it's strictly a malicious event, putting hot ashes in a container. Somebody slides off the road and crushes one of our containers with their car. Unfortunate accident, but not not our responsibility to to replace it. It's the person that was driving that vehicle or the property owner at that point. So I I hope I answered your question and can give you some comfort, you know, just letting you know that that we are a very stand-up corporation and will back everything that we're doing for you.
Mr. Bauer, I appreciate that your comments and thoughts. I, and I appreciate the clarification as to what the company's policy is. But strictly looking at the contract language we have here, company shall not be responsible for any damages to pavement, curbing, or other driving surfaces resulting from companies providing services under this agreement. If you're telling me that that's incorrect and we need to correct that to make it reflect what you just told us, I think that's fair and I'm happy to live with that. But that's not what the document says. And I assure you that if there's a problem, that your lawyers are going to say, no, we don't have to do that. And you're not going to do it. So if we've got an agreement that you're going to, you're going to in fact take care of those problems, let's draft that language so it reflects that. And I think that'd be a fair thing to do.
And Mr. Sweeney, I I agree with you. But over the course of the last eight months, while we were trying to draft the language of this contract, we we actually went back and forth and and tried to come up with a very simple solution. And this seemed to be the best answer for that section of this contract. I'm not really sure, and Angie, I'm not sure if you want to try to come up with some language. But I I I don't know if there's any way to really fix this portion of that contract other than the winged grid.
So I mean, I guess I, my suggestion would be to add after that sentence, well, let me, company shall not be responsible for any damages to any pavement, curbing, or other driving surfaces resulting from companies providing the services under this agreement that are not caused by the company.
And I would accept that as an amendment to the contract right now as written. And we can move that forward.
Thank you. I think that would, that would work for me and my fellow counselors will allow. I would suggest that that be an amendment to this agreement before we, before we get, before we approve it. But in any case, that's all the questions I have at this time. Thank you.
Frank, if we get a motion on the table to approve the contract, we could just take that amendment as a friendly amendment to the contract in a separate motion.
That's fine, thank you.
Ryan, any questions or comments this evening? Ryan, any questions for staff?
Anything for me, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ryan. How about Steve?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Next, Steve Ben.
Thanks, John. I've got a couple. I wanted to circle back real quick. I just want to say, first of all, Frank, I really agree with you. I had a couple of lists that were pretty concerning in here to me. And the language, particularly in section thirteen, was definitely one of them. I mean, there's just, there's several sentences in here that are saying the city shall be liable for this and the customer shall be liable for this. That felt just really odd and out of place to me. And so I'll think about that amendment. But I mean, it's, to me, I'm not sure that that's even clear enough to me. I mean, I, you know, expressly says customers are liable for personal injury lawsuits related to things in the container and stuff like that. It just, it felt odd. I also noticed that it doesn't have an indemnification clause for the city. And I, so I wanted to ask about that. You know, and I know one example that I thought of was whether somebody gets run over by a garbage truck.
So Ben, it doesn't have an indemnification clause, but it does have an insurance requirement, which is actually their CGL policy is actually beyond what we generally require for contracts. We usually require one point five million dollars for each occurrence and CGL coverage. If something were to happen and somebody gets run over by a garbage truck, it would be, you know, it would be Republic's responsibility and it would fall under their insurance coverage. So I found, you know, indemnity clause, we put it in contracts a lot. Sometimes they're useful, sometimes they're not. Sometimes you end up arguing more about the indemnity clause than you, than you are just dealing with each respective insurance provider. So it does have adequate insurance limits, and I would say more than adequate insurance limits. So in that case, it would be covered by their insurance.
What if the amount of the claim exceeds the amount of the insurance?
I mean, that's, that's always, that's always a possibility. And then they would be, depending on how the courts allocated fault, which, you know, you never know what's going to happen. But if it's, if it's something that they did, that it was their negligence, it was their intentional act, it would be, it would be their liability, not the city's.
If if they have a garbage truck, I mean, it can happen. That's why I asked their big trucks, if it hits a family of three and two of them are killed and, you know, the insurance liability limits are nowhere near enough to cover that. Do you feel we would be adequately protected or our citizens would be protected for that?
I do. We have our own insurance, you know, which has a fairly large limitation in the event that our torque cap of one point five million dollars didn't kick in. Again, you can never predict what a court would do, who they would find liable. The city is, of course, always a target because they assume, people assume we have deep pockets. But we do have our own insurance coverage that, you know, would kick in if for some reason we were sued as a result of that.
Okay. And then to shift gears for a second, it sounds like the way that this works is the Republic Services bills us for the services provided. We bill the customer. In the event that the customer doesn't pay, we are going to effectively cover that payment to Republic Services for them and then follow up with the customer at a later date. Is that understanding correct? And did I also understand that we have lien rights to to pursue payment if if need be?
That's correct. So and that's how it's worked when, in two thousand fifteen, when we were billing for service, that's exactly how it worked. So Republic Service will actually bill us before. And then we have time to get our bills ready to send them to customers so we know what we need to bill them. Because sometimes there might be extra pickups or something that we need to charge for. So that is the process. We do have the 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 ability to place any outstanding balances on a tax bill as an assessment, as we've done with water and sewer for some customers every year. So we are, in in my opinion, we are fully collectible, it's just the timing of collectibility.
That's reasonable. Okay. My next question is, do you have any concerns with the approach of, I'm asking about bear-proof containers? And I know that's something that's important to a lot of people in town, including me. And I know that's come up in a variety of council meetings. Do you worry that by trying to treat that as a separate issue, we just lose any leverage or any motivation to to do it at all?
You know, I don't, I don't think so. I think Republic, you know, cares about their public perception as well. And when there's gar, you know, with the, say, the mama bear that was was shot earlier this year, I think that there was a lot of upset people. And they're making progress on it. And I think, you know, either way, we have to understand that our current garbage rates and even this contract are the almost, almost the lowest in the entire state of Montana, with the exception, I think, of billings who operates their own garbage. So we have really great rates. That said, going to animal-resistant will cost more, the equipment costs more. But we're starting to look at other ways of doing it of, you know, phased approach by tiered areas. We worked with FWP to come up with a priority zone. Because right now, you know, if you've said we're doing it citywide, you might have people who are never seen a bear out their house and they don't know why that's happening. So so we're going to maybe look at priority zones. We'll have another work session. But I don't feel that we're losing anything, you know, any kind of negotiating powers, I guess, by settling this contract. You know, again, the unfortunate part with Montana is that garbage is not a competitive market. It is, you know, they operate in our jurisdictions. It is literally, we either go with Republic or we have to operate our own garbage service. And I can tell you that that would be more costly at this point to revert back.
Hanging up on the animal-proof containers is. Hanging up on the animal-proof containers, is that on our side or Republic's side? Or just something we haven't, we haven't really worked on too much for?
Dana, can I answer that question?
Oh, yeah. That's fine.
Yeah, Councilman Davis, that, right now, we offer animal-resistant containers, the bear-resistant containers, uh, to individual residents that want to sign up for it. The, the holdup was trying to figure out if you guys, as a city council, wanted to, to put an ordinance together to require bear-resistant containers for every location throughout the town of Whitefish. But, but right now, we do offer bear-resistant containers, or if you want to call them animal-resistant containers, to, to folks that request them. And as Dana said, we're working with her staff and Fish Wildlife and Parks to identify these zones that may be more troublesome than others to, to kind of attack those in the springtime or, or late fall when the bears are actually in town looking for food.
Yeah, just to add to that, one of our biggest challenges for, and why it wouldn't be so simple is logistically, there are no animal-resistant containers for 300-gallon containers. And we have a significant number of them in our probably highest priority area. So we are actually going to have to look at the cost of single-stream garbage for those residents. That might not go over well either with them because they're going to have to do curbside. We don't have room in the alleys to put, you know, each home have a 90-gallon in the back. It might have to go to curbside like it is in other areas. So there's a lot logistically that took longer. Also, COVID occurred and I can tell you my time was completely taken over by COVID for a good few months this year. And so there was some delay on my part as well.
Thank you. And I have one last question. It has to do with the, the hours of operation. I know it says in here that the pickups can start at 7:00 AM. And I know my pickup here is probably about 8:15 and, and I'm certainly up and going by then. So that's fine. But I know what, what can happen if it's too early. Uh, I mean, 7:00 AM is, is early for, for some folks. And what can happen is it encourages people to leave them out overnight. And without bear-proof containers, that becomes more problematic. I'm not even sure, there might even be a regulation against that. I don't even know. But has there been any thought given to that time? And, and would it make sense to have it a little bit later in the morning? Or, or any, any thoughts about that?
Mr. Davis, I'll answer that question as to why we want seven o'clock in the morning in there, or why we like to start at seven in the morning. And it's strictly based off of the times that the landfill's open. Our trucks will run eight to nine hours a day. Uh, if we started later in the day, we would not be able to dump those loads at the end of the day, which in turn is a huge liability for us, fire-wise, having garbage on trucks overnight. And those options, that's why we, we start at seven o'clock in the morning is just so we can get our trucks unloaded by 4:30 and out, back to the shop empty, so we can work on to our repairs.
But you actually, you actually start pickups at seven today?
Our trucks leave the yard at 7:00 AM and they'll get to the first stop, depending on how close it is. It might be 7:10, 7:15, but yeah, our trucks leave the yard at 7:00.
And I do know that the commercial is, you know, their first priority. So commercial could even be earlier than that, too. So I, I think it's difficult to be able to, you know, we've always allowed seven o'clock pickup. So those residents who are dealing with it now have always had it that way. So I don't know, I haven't heard any specific complaints about it. It is not allowed to leave it out overnight, though. We have regulations unless it's secured in a animal-resistant container.
Okay, I've asked enough questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca, any questions for Chad or Nina?
No, I just appreciate you guys working through this and that you're not raising rates to pass on the administrative costs to the residents, from what I understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. And finally, Andy, questions?
Um, yeah, I just, I highlighted, actually asked Frank about it this afternoon also. But I, and I hate to belabor section thirteen here, equipment access, but the line in that one that really upset me more than any of the other ones, actually, is customer shall fully reimburse company for any and all claims resulting from personal injury or death, or the loss of damage to property, including the equipment arising out of the use, operation, or possession of the equipment by the customer. And I'll just give you an example, and I may be reading this entirely wrong, but my 90-gallon container goes out and it has my number on it, my house number on it. And if the truck comes and picks up my container and knocks over the neighbor and they fall down and break their hip and they sue the company for getting hit by that can, well, that's my can. And as I read that, then that means I, the customer, which would ultimately be the city, then would be responsible for that. Is that, am I reading that incorrectly? I mean, because I used the can for its job. And that's to all the garbage out. It's got garbage in it, just being operated for garbage disposal into the truck. But it says that I'm responsible for what happens to that can.
Andy, you know, in Montana, you, you can't contract where you're on negligence. So if, if it was, if it was Republic's fault, Republic would be on, would be on the hook for it. And maybe Chad can talk a little bit. And again, Dana said this was, this was a challenging one for us. Maybe he can talk a little bit about, um, you know, the, the thought behind that. But I mean, I will tell you that under the Montana law, you can't contract where you're on negligence. So if it was Republic's fault, ultimately, Republic could be responsible for it.
Okay.
Yeah, and Angie's absolutely correct. The, the scenario that you just stated, that would be 100% our liability. It's, we're operating the vehicle, we're operating the can. If something was to happen, that, that is our liability on there, 100%.
Okay, I just, hopefully that's clear to everybody else, too. Because I understand if I throw it off an overpass and it goes through somebody's windshield, it's my fault. But I'm hoping that they understand that if you do it, that it's your fault, so.
If I may interject here, Mr. Mayor and Andy, I think I have a, a very simple fix to this. We could simply insert within that long and customer shall fully reimburse company arising out of the, instead of the use, operation, or possession of the equipment by customers, we would say arising out of the improper use, operation, or possession of the equipment by the customers. I think that would solve that problem and address that issue pretty directly. And I think it's consistent with what I've heard from, from the company about what they think is their responsibility.
I have no further questions.
Angie, if you are.
Yep, absolutely. Make that change.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks for the counsel for the questions. If there's nothing further, we did advertise for a public hearing on Resolution 21-01. So we will hold that public hearing now. I'll turn it over to Michelle to manage the public testimony this evening. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. So if you are interested in speaking towards this agenda item, please hover over your name on the right-hand side of your screen, the participants list, and right-click the hand icon. You can also, if you're visiting by phone, you can hit star three on your number pad. Or you can find the hand icon at the three dots on the lower portion of your screen next to the red X. Right-click that, the hand icon will be there. Or you can send a chat to myself and I will read that out loud. But there is multiple ways if you are having issues. It's best to download the WebEx app and then you'll have all those issues, those availabilities. While we wait for our hands to be raised, I do have one chat from Vida Wright, who has asked, is there any information on how many people in the high-bear zones leave their trash out overnight, even though it's not allowed? And then she also asked, if this is a big enough problem, could the early pickups be operated outside the high-bear zones?
I cannot answer the question in regards to how much is being left out at night. But I will tell you, we will pick up garbage earlier than 7:00 AM if the city requests it wherever we want.
I, I think, Chad, what the question was intended to get at was when and if we complete citywide mapping of the high-priority areas in terms of bear activity, could we defer pickup in those areas till later in the day? And this gets to Ben Davis's point about rolling their garbage out the night before because the trucks roll by at 7:10, they don't want to get out, roll their garbage out that early. So they roll it out the night before. And if that's happening in these higher-risk areas, could we possibly stagger those pickups to a later time during the day?
Mayor, absolutely. We would work with you guys however we can to, to help in those areas that are affected.
Great. Thanks, Chad. Michelle, any further comment to your same thing?
I do not.
With that said, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on Resolution 21-01 or Item 6B of our agenda and turn it back to the council for a motion, please, just to get this moving on.
I could make a motion to approve the agreement with Republic Services.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Rebecca, would you like to speak to your motion? And if there are any friendly amendments that we'd like to put forth before we vote on the original motion, let's take care of those next.
Uh, no, I appreciate the other counselors going through with the fine-tooth comb, comb to make sure that it's working. It's complicated. I am glad that we're taking over billing again. And I do appreciate them working with us so that we do have services. It's, we're, we forget sometimes that we're quite rural in Montana. So I appreciate them being willing to sit down and work out a lot of the details.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of, what I'll call friendly amendments that I'd like to offer at this time. I would like to amend, appears to be the one, two. I believe it's the third sentence in paragraph 13, Equipment Access, that begins, "Customers shall fully and reimburse, reimburse the company." I would propose that we amend that sentence to read, "Customers shall be, shall fully and reimburse company for any and all claims resulting from personal injuries, death, or other losses or damages to property, including the equipment arising out of," insert the word, "improper use, operation, or possession of the equipment by customer." I would further amend in that same paragraph, the last sentence to read as follows, "Company shall not be responsible for any damages to any pavement, curbing, uh, driving surface resulting from the company providing services under this agreement." And Angie, you had a quick couple of words that we would insert there to address this issue that they would be responsible.
Yep, Frank and I would just put at the end, um, well, I would just read the whole sentence again. "Company shall not be responsible for any damages to any pavement, curbing, or other driving surfaces resulting from companies providing the services under this agreement that are not caused by the company."
So moved.
I'll second.
John, you're muted.
No, seconded by Counselor Fury. Frank, any additional amendments?
No, not at this time.
Yep. Counsel? Further comments?
Yeah, could I, Frank or Angie or anybody? So I think, I'm glad we addressed those two sentences in that section. I'm, I'm just wondering about sentence number two in that same section. It says, "The city shall be liable for all loss or damage to such equipment, except for normal wear, tear, loss, or damage resulting from the company's handling of the equipment." I guess I'm just wondering if that sentence, it sounds like we'd be paying for garbage trucks under certain circumstances. I'm just kind of wondering if that makes sense.
Ben, I don't, I don't think that's the intent whatsoever. I mean, I think we're talking about the actual containers there. If you guys wanted to make that more clear, I mean, I think if you go on and it says, "Customer shall use equipment only for its proper and intended purpose and not shall overload by weight or volume, move or alter the equipment." But I mean, I think if you guys want to make that clear that, you know, you're talking about actual containers and not the garbage trucks themselves, I think that would be fine if Chad's okay with it.
Angie, would you read that one more time for me? I don't have a copy. I mean, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no problem, Chad. So it says, "The city shall be liable for all loss or damage to such equipment, except for normal wear and tear or loss or damage resulting from company's handling of the equipment." "City and customer shall use equipment only for its proper and intended purpose and shall not overload by weight or volume, move or alter the equipment." I think Ben's concern is that equipment is rather broad and somehow could be construed to be the, your guys' actual garbage trucks rather than just the containers, which I think is the intent of the provision.
Yeah, you're 100% correct. And I guess I, I'm trying to, and maybe Ben, you could clarify a little more. I, I, nobody else has been operating our garbage trucks. So I'm not sure that, 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 that equipment section is intended for carts and steel containers that we place at the residences or businesses. So I'm okay if you want to redefine that as, as carts and containers or however you want to word it. You know, I, I totally see what you're saying, but I, I don't see any reason why we'd have any issue with our trucks, especially since, you know, we're, we're in control of our vehicles at all times. And if our drivers are out of the truck and need to go into a store or something, they have to turn them off and take the keys with them and lock them up. So we've got our policies and procedures in place to protect our, our trucks. And it's, it's just strictly the equipment that, like we were talking about before, ashes in, in a cart or something of that nature.
And I think the important part is that first sentence, if we're going to try to define it, because it's any equipment that the company furnishes to customers. So they wouldn't be furnishing a truck to a customer. You know, the only items that they're going to furnish are, are the carts, to my knowledge at this point. So, you know, if you're going to change the definition, because that next sentence says, you know, "Damage to such equipment," it's referring to that first sentence. So, um, you know, you could even just add any equipment such as carts and containers or something like that.
Yeah, I agree with Dana that that first sentence kind of qualifies the second sentence as well.
Okay, I defer to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Further comments from the council? Michelle, roll call, please.
And this is for the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis? I'm sorry, Ben, I didn't hear you. I read your lips. Counselor Henin?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Fury?
Aye, in favor.
And Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thanks, Michelle. And the friendly amendment passes unanimously, which takes us back to the original motion. Someone have any further comments? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis? Counselor Henin?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And that motion does carry unanimously. Chad, thanks very much for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Have a great evening and happy new year. Thank you all. Have a good evening and happy new year.
You too. Do we want to take a short break or keep moving through? I think we should just keep moving through them. So we'll move on to Item 6C of the agenda, which will be ordinance 21-01, an emergency ordinance to ensure the continuity of COVID-19 precautions for the health and safety of the city's citizens and visitors by requiring the use of face coverings in certain settings and waiving a second reading. This will be the only reading if it's passed this evening. And before I turn it over to City Attorney Jacobs to present the ordinance, I would just like to inform the public where this originated from. Recognizing that Governor Gianforte has indicated his intention to lift Governor Bullock's masking directive, we felt as a council, and we are the policy setting arm of whitefish government, that we should hold a public hearing to consider the continuity of COVID-19 precautions in the form of requiring the use of face coverings in certain settings, if the current directive is repealed by Governor Gianforte. Again, only if the directive is repealed. So since this is an emergency ordinance, it does go into effect if passed and will terminate upon repeal by the city council within 90 days of the effective date. And it will require two-thirds vote of approval of the city council to pass this evening. With that said, I will turn it over to Angela now for her staff report. Thanks, Angie.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council and mayor. So the actual ordinance itself, the meat of it is on one, page 120 of the packet. So this ordinance actually very closely mirrors Governor Bullock's directive that was issued on July 15th of last year, requiring the use of face coverings. Section 2 sets forth the definitions. It's a little bit different than I think our original ordinance that we passed before Governor, right before Governor Bullock's original directive. So just to touch on some highlights, business is defined as any for-profit or nonprofit entity which has employees or volunteers. Face covering means a fabric, paper, or disposable face covering that covers both the nose and the mouth. Indoor space open to the public means any indoor space, whether publicly or privately owned, where the public has access by right or invitation. It also includes common areas, lobbies, elevators, bathrooms, meeting rooms, and other spaces where people gather. An organized outdoor activity means any gathering of 25 people or more for an activity or event that is actually sponsored by a business or person. This is a little bit different than the Governor's original mask ordinance. His original ordinance, or I'm sorry, directive was 50 people or more. In November, the Governor came out with yet another directive limiting gatherings to 25 or more. So this is actually in accordance with his November directive. Section 2 is face covering requirements in indoor spaces open to the public. And it requires all businesses, government offices, or other persons responsible for indoor spaces to require and take reasonable measures to ensure that employees, contractors, volunteers, customers, or other members of the public are wearing a face covering. It does require those same persons or entities to provide face coverings for employees and volunteers, and to sign their mask or face recovering used required for ages five and older. And again, this is in accordance with the Governor's first directive. And I think, least to my knowledge, most, most businesses already have these signs up. It does require a face covering for certain organized outdoor activities where social distancing is not possible or is not observed. And it does provide for certain exceptions, which I'll go over very briefly. Children under the age of five, it does encourage kids between the age of two and four to strongly encourage to wear face covering. Children under two should not be wearing face coverings. It has an exception for persons consuming food or drinks in an establishment that offers food or drinks for sale while seated. It has an exception for people engaged in activity that makes wearing a face covering impractical or unsafe, such as strenuous physical exercise, people seeking to communicate with someone who's hearing impaired, people giving a speech or engaging in an artistic endeavor, persons require medical evaluation diagnosis, and persons who have a medical condition that precludes the safe wearing of a face covering. It also, of course, gives ADA exemptions. It provides that businesses shall afford reasonable accommodation from the wearing of face coverings if it's required by federal and state disability protection laws, including the ADA and the Montana Human Rights Act. And it does require, a little bit different than the Governor's mandate, this one is, the Governor's mandate only required employees and volunteers and contractors in public-facing settings to require face coverings. This one does require that they have face coverings, even if they're not in a public-facing workspace, when social distancing is impossible to maintain with others. It does have some penalties. It's not, and I will stress this again, I think we did this when we passed our original ordinance prior to the Governor's directive. It is a municipal infraction. It is not a criminal violation. We are not going to be prosecuting or putting people in jail for not enforcing this. But it is a municipal infraction that could result in a civil fine. It could result in the suspension or revocation of a business license. It could result in the city reporting the violation to the Department of Revenue Liquor Control Division, which does not mean somebody's liquor license is going to be revoked. But the Department of Revenue does track a violation of city ordinances, and, you know, at some point can take action. But again, I would stress that it doesn't mean somebody's liquor license is going to be pulled because they, you know, didn't enforce the ordinance. It could be a public nuisance. And again, the continuing violation may be considered a separate and distinct offense. So again, what I would stress, just in case there's any confusion, it's, it's not a criminal ordinance. Nobody's going to be prosecuted for this. I think our focus really is on public education and trying to remediate violations before they would ever get to the penalty phase of this ordinance. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks very much. Angie, we'll start with Frank. Any questions on Angela's staff report or the ordinance?
No, I have no questions. Thanks.
Mayor, oh, sorry. Just real quickly, let you know that Jill Russell is on tonight with us, the health officer with the Flathead City County Health Department. Should you have any questions that relate to current case numbers or this ordinance?
Ryan, any questions for Angela?
Not at this time, Mr. Smith.
Steve?
I don't have any questions for, for Angie. I'm just wondering, but I would like to hear from Jill Russell before we turn it over to the public.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I have one question. I notice the one thing that's not in here is capacity limits at bars and restaurants. And I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Can everyone hear me?
I think that this question was directed to Angela Jacobs.
Okay, sorry. Ben, I can speak to that a little bit. You know, is a, whatever council, you know, you guys are the policymakers, and whatever you guys decide to do is fine. I have, I have some concerns, and maybe Joe can follow up on this a little bit and give us a little bit more information, which would be great. As a trailer city, we do have extremely broad powers. But our police powers are some limited to a certain extent. You know, I think in order to enact the Governor's directive with respect to shutting down bars and restaurants at 10:00 and enacting some capacity limitations, we would have to, you know, in my mind, see a strong tie between the spread of COVID and the operation of bars and restaurants past 10 o'clock at night and capacity issues. I don't know that when Tamalee was the director of the City County Health Department, that we, that she necessarily said that there was that kind of connection. My understanding, and your guys' of course might be different, was that the spread was more tied to large events such as weddings, trade shows, and such, and, and actually people gathering after bars and restaurants closed. I do have concerns that if we were to somehow enact an ordinance that would, again, require bars and restaurants have limited capacity and close at 10:00, it would actually encourage people to gather after bars and restaurants are closed. And from what I've seen, and I haven't been out much, I'm not very social, bars and restaurants are doing a pretty good job of enforcing the mask ordinances and having proper sanitation protocols in effect. Whereas if you're at a house party after hours, it's not necessarily going to be the case. So it wasn't included as part of the draft ordinance. I think it is something the council could consider. But then again, I would be really interested to hearing from Joe about where they're seeing the spread, because I just don't know where that is at this point.
Thank you. Is there any other major differences from Governor Bullock's requirements?
The only major differences between, between Governor Bullock's requirements is when we first started to enter into the phasing, the gathering point was 50. And I think I pointed out, this one, it talks about outdoor, organized outdoor gatherings. And we reduced that down to 25, just to be more consistent with his most recent face covering mandate and gathering guidelines. The only really other big difference is, again, members of the public-facing workspace, he just basically said, if you, you're only required to wear masks if you're in the public-facing workspace. We heard some concerns when we enacted our mask ordinance about employees working really, really closely together in small kitchens. And so we just added the requirement that they are required to wear masks if it's not possible to socially distance.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
To Ben's question, Joe, do you have anything to add regarding occupancy limits, enforcement, et cetera, from your perspective? This was directed at you, Ben. Mayor, I, I think this is a good first step. I do, I have a little inside information on, the Governor's task force does still have some public health controls in there. We have not seen that. It could come out as early as tomorrow, no later than the end of the week. So we'll see what they're, what they're going to do for some public health controls. I, I think I heard the same thing you did about Governor Gianforte, that he was thinking not having mask mandates. I applaud you on getting in front of this. But anything else, we haven't heard of any other controls. But that doesn't mean they're not going to be there. He's been keeping it pretty good under wraps. So let's see what happens over the next few days, and then we can double back if necessary. The question, I think your city attorney answered it pretty well. There's so many, when you start to investigate these diseases, any disease, the confounding that happens in a social setting is really difficult to pin down. Mask use is a good, there's, it's, it's a good demonstrated public health measure when you can't social distance. So I, I think you're on the right track. But I would wait to do anything else until we hear what the Governor's going to, going to do. And Dana, I sent you three slides. So I don't know if you're, you have your email.
Yeah, I can pull it up. Give me one sec.
Just to, this, this will kind of give you a pretty good recap in three slides, what's going on in Flathead County. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. Sure. Thanks for coming back to the helm, too. I know it's not fun times. Yeah, yeah. Some real challenges, getting up early and stuff like that. So it's all coming. Right. See, the first slide says new cases over time. Maybe just to preface before the slides come up, we're actually seeing a downward trend in cases. There could be a lot to do with that, but it's promising to see what we're seeing. There's a lot of fluctuation, especially in the holiday season with the hospital lab not reporting and such. But we're seeing a good downward trend since November, the first of November. So pretty happy about that. You should see it pop up any second here. So this is, this is data that Ben refers to today. You can see, the holidays get kind of wacky because of the no reporting. But I put a trend line on it. You can see, we're on a downward trend. And that's a good sign. The next three weeks are going to be super, super critical to see where we actually go. But we've seen this downward trend even before, you know, before the holidays. So we can go to this next slide, Dana. So we're, we're actually administering vaccine in the community. And this is the Logan Health Clinic's numbers. If you, if you jump down to the bottom right, you'll see they've, they've administered 1,782 doses, 1,170 of Pfizer. And they had 700 Moderna's, Moderna vaccines delivered. And they've, they've administered 612 of that. So you can see how it kind of breaks down. We are getting those forward-facing healthcare providers, those patient-facing healthcare providers. But we're also getting some of the other really important people, EMS, police. And Dana, if you go to the next one, the next one is actually North Valley. And these slides you can distribute. But this is North Valley. They received 402 doses of Moderna about the same time we did at the Health Department. They've administered all their doses. And as you can see, first responders, and I know a lot of these are North Valley first responders. So Dana, you might know what you've been doing in, with your first responder group. But then you get the, you know, the patient folks, 279 of those. And then it kind of peters down. But these are good numbers. And the Governor has actually, it's embargoed information, but tomorrow he will have a press release on, on how he's going to restructure the vaccine delivery based on those tiers that you might have heard about. Tier 1A is what we're in now. So this is going to change a little bit. And as we move to 1B, I'm not at liberty to say anything in front of the Governor's press conference, but our tier 1B is going to change. Most people will say, yes, it's, it was a good idea. So that's kind of where we are. It's just three slides, but it's a lot of information. Really happy to see the, you know, the trend is of new cases over time is going down. Those are all really positive things that we can see in our community. Questions regarding vaccines or testing? Thanks, Joe. Any questions for Joe on the slides or any other questions you may have?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Rebecca.
Hi, Joe. Thanks for coming after already going to the Kalispel City Council meeting. Appreciate it. One, one question I had was, do you think as our city-county health department supervises, I'm sorry, help, I forgot what your title is. But do you think you will be implementing any, any restrictions on social gatherings? They were very difficult to pass through last fall. But are you anticipating doing anything from your end? And then things like occupancy or gathering limits, things like that. And then what is our current positivity rating also? Thank you.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll take the easy one first. Our positivity rate's been hanging around 15%. And that's been week over week. It's good when we see cases dropping over time and our positivity rates remaining pretty steady. That actually more indicates that we're seeing a reduction in cases overall in our community. So positivity rate, that means of all those tested, how many are positive? It's about 15%, 14.8 the last two weeks. So that's a good sign also, that that's steady. And then your other question, a lot harder for me. And I, I think if we were just, you know, and this is a, a pretty difficult time for me to come in. know, this is a pretty difficult time for me to come in. I can tell you I'm going to wait for the governor's directives to see what's there. I'm working with a board membership of eight people with another person coming on. I am the third health officer in one year. Are you starting to get this trend of why I might not be jumping into a frying pan? But, you know, I'm going to take this very deliberately, those that, I know there's some folks on the council here that have worked with me in the past, and, you know, I have a strong public health belief in everything I do, and I'll do what I can within reason. And I'm going to probably leave it at that for now. I hope you don't seem like I'm copping out, but.
No, I know you're aware of everything. I just wanted to know if anything was maybe coming from your end, but I agree, we have to wait to see what the governor's going to be doing. Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
And finally, Andy, any questions for Joe or Dana or Angie?
No questions.
Further questions before we go to our public hearing from the council? Not seeing any, just in the spirit of running an efficient meeting, as the presiding officer, I will request that all public comment be limited to three minutes. Please, with that said, I'm going to turn it back to Michelle to manage the public comment, public testimony portion of this hearing. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, if you would like to speak towards this agenda item, this is the time for you to raise your hand, which would be to hover over your name in the participants list on the right-hand side of your screen and click the hand icon. You can also, if you're on your phone, hit star three on your phone pad, or the three dots at the bottom of the screen to the left of the red X, right-click that and click the hand icon, or send me a chat in the chat box, which is at the lower right-hand portion of your screen. Please don't, I might not see you if you're waving at me, so please raise your hand. I do have 34 participants here to tend to and to manage. So please raise your hand in the participants page. Mr. Von Kleist, please find your name to the right side where your participants page is and raise your hand. The first one is Thomas M. You can unmute your phone or unmute your mic and speak. Thank you. Thomas, I see that you're muted, but we can't hear you. You'll need to unmute your mic. Do you have? Okay. He said that he'll try in a few minutes. So even though you waved at me, Mr. Von Kleist, I will let you unmute your mic and speak.
Okay, hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I hope you all had a wonderful Christmas, and we're all looking forward to a new year. Thank God 2020 is over. Just as an aside, the Pledge of Allegiance, you just want to brush up on that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. That wasn't in there. Anyway, I just want to start out by quoting something. "Hi, I'm from the government. I'm here to help you." Okay, we've all heard that before. In regard to the mask ordinance, there's a few points that I'd like to make before we get to that. I just mentioned, "I'm from the government. I'm here to help you." The government, unfortunately, if my personal belief and the belief of many others, is that if the government really cared about our health, they would have gone after Monsanto, Union Carbide, Big Agra, years and years and years ago. If the government really cared about your health, they wouldn't have made the pharmaceutical companies that manufacture the vaccines to be held harmless in the event of a vaccine injury. If the government really cared about our health, they wouldn't allow all of these different additives, chemicals, prions, bisphenol A into our food supply and our water supply. And like I said, I want to make a couple of these points. These are all common sense, because you can't make an informed decision without gathering information. And unfortunately, most of the information people gather is coming directly from government and mainstream media sources. I don't think I have to really push the issue too much. The credibility of the mainstream networks is really down the hopper these days. And with the shutdowns that we've experienced for the past nine months, there are legions of independent researchers who are rediscovering what real investigative journalism is all about. And if we're getting all of our information from the likes of Fauci and Bill Gates and BRICS, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, those are the go-to guys, and the WHO, of course, the CDC, the FDA, and we always go to the same cast of characters. However, there are legions of doctors, nurses, health providers all over the country and all over the world, who are screaming to the rooftops to take another look at the real science behind the COVID-19 virus. I mean, a lot of the stuff that's being implemented as far as our behavior patterns are concerned, things like hand washing, everywhere we go, we see antibacterial soap being provided. How does bacterial soap kill a virus? It doesn't. We also hear about the masks not being as effective cutting down our oxygen levels. That's all been proven, too. And most recently, at a convention in Belfast, Ireland, there are hundreds of physicians that came together and basically had to admit that they've never been able to isolate the COVID-19 virus. So if they haven't been able to isolate it, how could a PCR test possibly detect it? Moreover, how could you possibly develop a vaccine for a virus that has yet to be detected? Now, all of these. Okay, I'll wrap it up by simply saying, I don't believe in the masks. I don't believe in shutting down businesses. The people that are suffering are the children. The psychological damage is irreparable, and all the businesses that are suffering because of the early shutdowns and the restrictions that are being put upon them. I beg you, I beg you to take a look at all of the sites and hyperlinks I sent you in my email. And please consider, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Michelle.
Randy, you can unmute your mic.
Good evening. I find this very swallow when the numbers just don't calculate. We have in just in our valley of 0062. So, Joe, the numbers that you give us of these positivity cases mean absolutely nothing when people are recovering from this minor. I haven't heard anything of flu, heard anything about cold numbers, flu numbers, anything else. And, Joe, you mentioned that you're having a difficult time right now. Well, let me suggest to you, I would like you to try and run a business where it depends on tourism, and you have a city council, the mayor sitting here, and several times people walk through behind him and hypocritically is not wearing a mask, but wants to bully and intimidate the citizenry and the businesses and the tourists to keep them from coming to town and making money. And all we hear about is the resort tax being low this year, and that there's a possible threat of increasing the report. Well, I wish I could keep tourists coming into town so that I could tell them that they need to give me money. Do that. But for some reason, you guys can go around not wearing masks and giving us these positivity numbers that mean absolutely nothing to the overall reality of what's going on. This is bullying, and I believe that if Dr. Fauci wanted us to wear propeller caps on our heads and that would work, you'd probably just go right along. But Montana overwhelmingly voted for people that are going to lead this state and allow its citizens to govern their own health. You are neither epidemiologist and you are not parents. We can handle our own health. You truly believe that masks work, city council and mayor? You believe that masks work, then wear them, protecting yourself and anybody that passes by. But don't require everybody to wear masks if they don't want to. It is keeping the tourists from coming in to our town and spending their money and their time in this beautiful place, and the people, this city is going to die if you continue to force us to turn people away and turn them off through your bullying, through your hypocrisy, through your intimidation. This is nothing, cowardice. Your campaign that you have right now, on the banners and all around.
Thanks for your comments, Randy.
It's a campaign of cowardice, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Randy, good night. Michelle, next participant, please.
Very much for not even listening to us, just doing what you wanted.
Next speaker, please.
Thomas, I'm not sure if you, I see that you came back, but I'm not sure if you want to speak, but you can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick point of order. I do believe we usually have people give their name and address when they speak in public meetings.
Thank you for the reminder, Steve. Yes, for the record, your name and address, please. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tom, and I live in Flathead County. I do not live in Whitefish, but I do business in Whitefish, or I used to, anyway. I'll just be very brief, a few points, I will take up my room. I previously sent a comment over the weekend, and I had a lively exchange of information with Councilman Henin, I believe he was. So if you want to know what we discussed, you can just ask him, and I'm sure he'll fill you in. Data about all of what this ordinance would do, and because that isn't necessary, I don't have the time to do it in this forum, and I believe my words would just fall on deaf ears, anyway. I'll just, to the bottom line, and here is the bottom line, folks. If this emergency ordinance passes, and Whitefish requires face coverings when the rest of the state and Flathead County are not requiring face coverings, then Whitefish businesses will lose customers, clients, income, and the city will lose tax revenue. Why is that? Because when people see that 80% to 90% of the businesses outside of the city limits do not require masks, they will deliberately go out of their way to patronize those businesses. And why would they do that? Because most people don't like wearing these masks. That's this fraud, and absolutely dread having to go into a store or restaurant with one. They do it because they believe they have to do it. Do it out of fear of being fined, fear of being harassed, fear of being publicly shamed for fellow citizens, for heaven's sake. Most people hate them so much that they're willing to travel miles to avoid those doors and restaurants. And let me remind you of human nature, and human nature says when they're presented with a choice, most people will choose the path of least resistance or the path of least pain. So if a person can travel a few miles and shop and dine with no mask, no hassle, no shaming, no condemnation, guess which one they're going to choose? So here's the literally the million-dollar question you need to ask yourself before you vote on the ordinance. Are you willing to place Whitefish businesses in a position to lose revenue and possibly lay off workers and place the city of Whitefish in a position to lose tax revenue over a mask? Think carefully, foisting this experiment on the businesses of Whitefish and the city coffers. And I'll finish up with this quote, and it's from one of our founding fathers. His name is Thomas Jefferson. He said, "There is no justification for taking away individual freedom in the guise of public safety." You guys have a great evening and Happy New Year. Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas, for your comments.
So we'll give just a little bit longer for folks to be able to raise their hand if they still would like to speak towards this agenda item. Hover over your name on the participants list, right-click on the hand icon, or send me a chat, or the three dots to the left of the X, you can right-click there and raise your hand.
Hi, Michelle, can I give a comment by phone if I give my name?
Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, this is Vida Wright, and I live in the Donut, but do all of my living in Whitefish. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I just want to commend and support the city council for getting on the front end of this with the governor saying that he's going to take away the state mask mandate. I think it's really important, especially here, where we have the ski hill and downtown. It's one of the places in the state that probably has the highest number of visitors from out of town and out of state. And so in my mind, there's a lot of logic for doing this here in Whitefish, even if much of the state doesn't see a need to do that right now. I do have a question. I'm just going to state it now, but I'm hoping that Joe Russell can address it after words. I have a question about the positivity rate versus the daily numbers per population. There is a nonprofit website called COVID Act Now that's in affiliation with Georgetown University, Stanford, and Harvard, and they list, they have information for different counties, and they list us as having a similar positivity rate to what you said, Joe, but they also say that in this location, there's indication of insufficient testing. So I was curious about that, but mostly I wanted to speak in support of the mask mandate because of the visitors from out of town, also the recent surge in cases that Flathead County had, and the potential that we could, the very real potential that we could have another surge like that. There's the new variant, which is more contagious and starting to spread in this country, and then the unknown effects of, the long-term effects of the disease, and also it's unknown why some people get so sick and others don't. In response to some of the other comments, I just wanted to say that there are also a lot of us, including someone that I heard give comments when this issue came up in the spring with the city council, but I definitely go to the businesses where I feel like this is taken seriously and the masks are enforced. And so there may be some people on each side of that. When the governor says that he's doing this so that people can be in charge of their own health and the health of their families, I think he's missing the fact that there's a social responsibility and a need to wear masks in order to protect other people beyond ourselves and our families. And then I just wanted to share another, respond to another comment that what I'm reading is that the cold and flu numbers are down across the country because of masking and social distancing. So I'll end it there, but I very much appreciate you guys trying to get on the front end of this.
Thank you, Vida, for your comments tonight.
I don't see any other hands raised. I do see where Randy's raised again, so I'm not sure if you would like for him to address the council again. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
If the council member wants to acknowledge Randy, then he can be acknowledged. If not, he's had his opportunity to comment this evening. I'll acknowledge Randy for another three minutes.
Randy, if you'd like to speak again, you can unmute your mic.
Thank you for doing that. This is a situation where we're spending money.
I'd also like to hear Randy's address, his full name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Steve. I was just going to ask.
My name's Randy. I work in Whitefish. There you go. The, I would love tax dollars instead of spending it on these fearful campaigns putting up to scare kids and other people and making it sound like everybody's heroes who wear a mask, and then not wearing one here at city council. How about fixing some of the roads, spending some time on fixing some of the alleys that have massive potholes? Um, how about fixing some of the roads, spending some time on fixing, uh, some of the alleys that have massive potholes? And that, and, and maybe Spokane and letting some of these tourists enjoy and in spending their money and their time in the, uh, city of Whitefish. Again, like I said, you guys are not our parents. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I don't, I don't feel like I need to wear a mask, but if I get sick and I, um, die, what does that matter to you? It's my health, it's my body. And if you want to wear a mask and you believe that they work, then go ahead and let them work. This is not a dictatorship and let us run our business and let us do our business in Whitefish as we see fit. And like Vida said, Vida, if you don't want to go into a store, avoid it. If you're scared of, of COVID, stay at home, wear your mask and stay at home. And if you don't like the business, then stay at home. I say that to everybody. If you don't like it, take care of yourself. I'll take care of myself. But this is nothing but bullying. And I think on, on the city council side and on the mayoral side, this is a campaign of cowardice and it's scaring children. It's scaring people into attacking businesses and, and outing businesses that are trying to make a living. And Joe, the city of Whitefish has ashtrays everywhere. You might want to talk to the city council about smoking and the dangers of smoking and the high risk of heart disease like places like Dairy Queen. There's no warnings before you go in there, but we have to wear masks now? I'd appreciate it if you listened to our concerns and you did something about it and just, instead of just up your minds and not caring about the, uh, incomes of the people that are doing business here and that are keeping the city of Whitefish running with our tax revenues that we're providing you and, and, and collecting for you. Thank you. I appreciate the second opportunity.
Michelle, are you seeing any further public comment online? And if, if, if not, if you could just provide a quick summary of the written comments that the council received up until 5:00 PM of this evening, I would appreciate that.
I do not see any others speak, wanting to speak. Um, again, if you're on the phone, please hit star three on your phone pad and that will raise your hand. Um, we did receive, uh, forty-five letters. Um, and of those thirty-seven were against. And six were for.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. And just for, so the public's aware, uh, I believe every counselor did read the full submittal from the public comments that were provided via email and now I did myself. And they have been included for the public record, in the public record, I should say. Not seeing anyone else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for consideration. And to move this along, I would prefer we start with a motion, one way or another, up or down, just get discussions moving.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, emergency ordinance. Number twenty-one. I don't, I don't know what the number is. Twenty-one dash one. Yep, um, as written.
Thanks, Rebecca. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Rebecca, would you like to speak to your motion?
Rebecca, I think you're muted.
Thanks, Michelle. I appreciate everybody's input as to how we should proceed as a community. I, um, have a science background and so I do study the science of COVID every day. And I, and I assess public input based on the understanding of the seriousness and emergency of, of this issue that we're dealing with. Um, I'm, I'm hopeful that the governor will, um, perpetuate our safety precautions in the state because some of us, for instance, Whitefish is a tourist destination. So we have incoming people from all over the nation and sometimes the world. And, um, and the virus is very, um, difficult to contain without safety protocols in place. So I am happy to support this as one, one part of our safety protocol. However, I do think individual businesses should cons- consider maintaining, um, their own, distancing, um, and possibly occupancy guidelines that they've been using successfully for a number of months. We are not out of the woods in any way yet. Um, and it's probably one of the more dangerous times that we're in before we, um, are able to finally open up society again. So even though people are reluctant to believe that masking works, there's been many, many reports that have shown, um, evidence that it helps. And it even new evidence that shows that it also protects the wearer somewhat as well. The most important thing, though, again, is distance between us. And that's the hardest part in the middle of winter, uh, because we're all getting kind of tired of this. So anyways, I'm supporting continuing with the masking and then possibly when the new, um, governor, Gianforte's task force comes out with new measures, we can talk if we need to do anything else. Um, or if they're going to be doing it from a statewide level. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. I'm going to go through the council and just to move things along. Frank, any comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to add one thing. It matters that keep in mind, one of the largest businesses and most important businesses in our community is the Whitefish Winter Resort. Uh, the mountain has been a part and parcel of this community for a very, very long time. It is, in many respects, the reason we are as successful as we are as a, um, as a community. Um, the mountain has instituted a number of COVID-related precautions, including the requirements that all people wear masks and that all people allow for social distancing. I think if the city were to do anything less, we would send a mixed message to the patrons there. I think we'd send a mixed message as to our support for the mountain and what I believe is a very appropriate and quite, uh, innovative approach to ensuring that the, as they say, that, that the, uh, the lifts can continue to turn all season and that we don't become a hotspot for that very reason. And so that among many reasons I'm going to support, I obviously support this, um, ordinance. I think it's important to, in support of our businesses, not in restrictions of them. And I also think it's incredibly, it'd be incredibly, uh, foolhardy for us not to support the mountain and what they're doing, uh, to ensure their guests and our guests are, uh, are, uh, as safe as, as we can make them. So thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Ryan, further comments?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of comments here. You know, I've been reading a lot about lately about COVID and the effects of COVID and listening to a lot of podcasts about it. It's hard not to, given that it's consumed just about every facet of everyone's life for the entire last year. I think that most, most people are well-meaning people who want to try to be socially responsible and are willing to sacrifice some of their comfort for the greater good. But that said, it sucks. You know, the thing is, people can really put up with a lot. They can put up with almost anything so long as they think it will end, um, that it's temporary. Uh, and here we are, you know, ten months later and we're heading into this winter and it's, it's just looking and feeling like none of this is temporary, that all of this is just going to go on and on forever. And you start to feel like all these sacrifices that you've made in terms of your personal relationships and your ability to be with loved ones and your ability to have any kind of meaningful social life, the ability to have a job, has all been put on the back burner with no real, um, clear positive end in sight. You know, and then you see these stories about these politicians who are attending fancy indoor dinners at Michelin-star restaurants or the mayor of Austin telling people they need to be responsible and stay indoors while posting this in a video while he's in Cancun. I think people see this and their logical conclusion is that COVID is fake and they shouldn't care. Uh, so part of me doesn't blame them. Uh, that's why I don't get angry at the emails that I get. Uh, I try to respond to as many as I can because we're all supposed to be, you know, we're all supposed to be okay sitting here, you know, having our Thanksgiving dinner with a jar of cranberry sauce for a Zoom Thanksgiving when these people are out eating fancy dinners. I'm sorry, but my appetite for telling people how to navigate this pandemic is shrinking day by day. I look around and it's getting harder not to just throw your hands up and say, "Every man for himself." But, you know, to be clear, I believe that the moral and ethical thing to do is to continue to grit your teeth and do the best that we can to deal with the reality that we live in. I think wearing a mask accomplishes that. I truly do not think that it is too much to ask. It's easy to sit here and look at anti-COVID people and say, "How could you do that?" Or "How could you be so irresponsible?" But as I said before, I really can't blame them. Giving the messages that we're getting from our leaders at the state and federal level, who are supposed to be responsible. People look at people like that and they say, "Well, they don't care, so why should I?" It comes across as these politicians sounding like, "Well, these restrictions are just for irresponsible people. They're not for me and my friends." So I fully understand the anger that we see surrounding COVID. We've all been told for months and months and months now, "Do the right thing. The end is just around the corner. Do the right thing. By Easter, you'll be able to see your family. Do the right thing and maybe we'll have a Halloween. It's just this endless horizon." And I have this gnawing suspicion that 2021 is going to be a lot like 2020. It's a nightmare that feels like it's never going to end. But no matter whether you're trying your hardest or you just don't care, everyone can only take so much. That said, I'm in support of this mask ordinance. If it keeps our businesses open, I am for it. If it means we are that much closer to increasing the capacity at our bars and restaurants, I am for it. If it means we are closer to having our bars and restaurants stay open later, I am for it. If this mask ordinance gets us closer to the end, I'm for it. I appreciate the public comment tonight and I do read every comment and I do give them quite a bit of thought. That said, I do not think that wearing a mask is too much to ask. Maybe they're ineffective, maybe not, but if it helps our businesses stay open and operating and serving their customers, then I'm all for it. Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate that. Steve?
Uh, thank you, John. Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, I do want to address some of the misinformation that's out there because I do think as an elected official, it's, um, the, this continued, uh, stream of misinformation from elected officials, it needs, it needs to stop. And it's given rise to people believing just whatever they want to believe and it's not fair. The science is there that supports masks. Um, I did dig into, uh, the, the links of different studies that people sent. And what I came up with, and if you look at the, the, there's a common thread in the ones that say masks aren't effective. Uh, there's two common threads. One, the first common thread is that the, the, the study was not done about COVID-19. Uh, that's the first thread. Those were the first reports that came out in the spring, were not about COVID-19. They were about other SARS-like viruses or SARS viruses that are not COVID-19. The other is that they can't get a real study done because they can't do a blind study with this thing. There's no, there's just not a possibility to do it. Um, there's a lot made about this Danish study that shows where the, where the, um, the scientists, uh, agreed that, that there is no, um, there is no benefit from wearing a mask. And then you dig deeper into the study and it shows that, uh, they, they couldn't be sure about their finding because the, um, masks were not required in the area. And mask wearing was inconsistent where they did the study. And that is precisely what we are trying to prevent here. That's why we're doing this. Is we want mask wearing to be consistent and it has to be required in, for it to even be con- close to consistent. And with that said, I understand that doesn't matter what kind of science you send to somebody. There are people that just don't believe science. They're going to believe what they want to believe. And that's unfortunate. Um, and as I've said all along, the failure in this whole thing has been from leadership at the top. This is not a public, this is not a political issue. It's a public health issue and it should never have been treated like a political issue and unfortunately it was. And that's why we are where we are as a country. That's why we are where we are as a state and where we are as, we are as a county and now in our city. And it's going to, even if we have a mask ordinance, it's going to be really, really difficult to enforce, especially if, if the state goes the other way. We have to be prepared for that. Um, and it could lead people to talk to other people, to tell people to, "Hey, wear your mask. I've seen it in the grocery store. I've seen it in line at the, on the lifts and, and people who aren't wearing masks thumb their noses at people who mentioned, "Hey, you're supposed to do this. Couldn't you just follow the rules?" Um, and some people's, quite frankly, just don't care. For what reason? Whether it's out of selfishness or whatever it is, I don't know. Um, I get that people are tired of it. I wear a mask all day, every day at school. The last two weeks have been so refreshing because I haven't had to wear one except in line at the lift. And when I go in stores, uh, and now I'm right back into it, wearing a mask all day, every day. And I hate it. And I do it because I need to do it. Because it's not about me, it's about the kids in my classroom. It's about their parents and their grandparents and the people that they live with and they go out into the community with. Because if I have it and I have to spread it and I happen to spread it because I'm not wearing a mask, that's on me and that's not fair. So, uh, I think that's, that's really pretty much all I have. Um, it's clear that I'm going to support this. Uh, I do worry about the enforcement of it and what that's going to lead to. Uh, I don't, I don't, quite honestly, don't know. Um, I know that we have a lot of really good businesses and I'd like to call out some of those um, that, that take this stuff seriously and have been working very hard to prevent, to do their part in making, in following the rules that we put out there and that the governor has put out. And, um, kudos to all those businesses that do that. There are others that haven't and it's, and again, it's unfortunate. I think that's all I have to say. Yeah, that's all I have to say. I will be supporting this ordinance.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Ben, any comments tonight before we take a vote?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I would just say I, like everybody else, I cannot wait until life goes back to normal. And I know the masks are a pain. Nobody likes them. I certainly don't like them. Uh, but I agree with Ryan. I don't think it's too much to ask. And, you know, the reality is that life is not going to go back to normal until the spread of this virus is abated, one way or another. So that day to go back to normal is not today. I, I do think that some continuity, um, of these regulations is necessary uh, in our community where we have a public station and we have a lot of folks coming from out of town who are also accustomed to wearing masks, quite honestly, much of the rest of the country. So I agree. I don't think it's too much to ask. I think we need to grit our teeth and get this done for a while longer and have, um, optimism for a better future later this year. So I will be supporting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And Rebecca.
John, I already, I already spoke when I made the, um, motion. So I think it's, um, it's Andy and Frank that need to talk.
Understood. Thanks, Rebecca. Wanted to give you one more opportunity. Appreciate it. And finally, Andy, any comments tonight?
Um, yeah, obviously I have a few comments. I'm not going to comment on the efficacy of masks because unfortunately, no one's able to come up with an agreed-upon set of facts for that. So I'm not going to convince anybody that they work and I'm not going to convince anybody that they don't work. So what we find ourselves in the rather untenable position of being the people that have to decide whether we should wear them or not. Now, there's two arguments essentially against, mostly just basically two arguments. One is an argument of personal liberty, other is the efficacy. So efficacy, we can't, can't decide that. Now, with regard to the personal liberty side of it, I Now, with regard to the personal liberty side of it, I think that, and sadly, I think there was an attorney on here who spoke to us earlier and made a quote from Thomas Jefferson. But if you would actually look at the law and see what our ability is to do something like that, he would have looked at the Jacobson versus Massachusetts case of 1905. And it's interesting how history does repeat itself and repeats itself very often. And for those that don't recall, that was the height of the smallpox outbreak in the Northeast and in the city of Cambridge. And there was a smallpox vaccine that had come along, and that smallpox vaccine was being required by the city and the state at that time. And they decided that case then against Mr. Jacobson and in favor of the state of Massachusetts. And I'm going to read just a couple of things from the opinion from the majority, and it was a seven to two majority. "In every well-ordered society charged with the duty of conserving the safety of its members, the rights of the individual and respect of his liberty may, at times, under the pressure of great dangers, be subjected to such restraint to be enforced by reasonable regulations as the safety of the general public may demand." "And that real liberty for all could not exist under the operation of a principle which recognizes the right of each individual person to use his own liberty, whether in respect to his person or his property, regardless of the injury that may be done to others." And again, it's really interesting how history tends to repeat itself. So further in that decision, when they're talking about the prevalent and increasing rate of infection in Cambridge, they say necessary in order to protect the public health and secure public safety. "The court noted that Jacobson had offered and provided a lot of proof from the medical community who believed smallpox vaccine would not stop the spread of the disease. In fact, other diseases of the body were more dangerous. However, opinions offered by Jacobson were, quote, 'more formidable by their number than by their inherent value.' What everybody knows, opposite theory accords with the common belief and is maintained by high medical authority. Therefore, it was left to the legislature, that would be us, the city council, not the courts, to determine which of these two models was likely to be the most effective for the protection of the public against disease." Well, that states it all pretty darn well. So for me, when I make this decision, I look at it and I look at the evidence and I read all of the things that Mr. Van Kleisch sent to us today, and I read all of the things that the other people sent to us. And I come back to this court case, which was upheld in also 1922, 1927, 1944, recently cited in 1995, and just recently sort of cited in the Fifth Circuit Court in Texas this year with regard to provision of certain medical services in the state of Texas. I find myself in the position that I am responsible for the public safety and the public health. And if I look at the evidence and if I look at what's out there, I have to say, from my personal opinion and from all the research I've been able to do, masks are effective hundred percent, no. But they do make a difference, and therefore I'll be supporting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Andy, Frank, I believe you did comment, correct?
I did. I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with the comments received from the council, Michelle will call.
Counselor Quinnell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
In favor.
Counselor Davis?
In favor.
Counselor Henan?
In favor.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And the ordinance does pass unanimously. And again, I'd like to thank the public for participating this evening in our public hearing. With that said, we'll move on to item seven. You have Dana's written report and closed with the packet. Any questions for Dana on her updates? Dana, anything additional to report on?
Not this evening.
Great. Appreciate it. The report. I will move on to item eight. And I think we've exhausted the COVID-19 topic. And I think where how we move forward from here is we'll evaluate, continue evaluating the governor's new task force. Make sure Dana and Joe will apply to the council what any changes they need to do.
Mr. Mayor, could I just interrupt for a second? Ask Michelle to turn off the chat because people are using it as a place to continue their comments right now. But I don't think we need it this night.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Steve.
With that said, we'll move on to item nine, communications from the council. Frank, any comments this evening before we?
The only thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, is I am pleased, as most people, that this is 2021, and we've put most of 2020 twenty in the hindsight now in terms of the difficulties. I'm very hopeful for this year, and I'm hopeful for things in the nearer term than I am, than even long term. But I'm willing to put up with this to make this thing work. So anyway, Happy New Year's to all, and let's get this thing done. Thanks.
Thanks, Frank. Counselor Henan, you can further tonight?
Uh, no, nothing. I'm making Happy New Year to everyone.
Thanks, man.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you had a wonderful holiday. Thanks for the wonderful card, Dana. Really appreciate it. The other thing I want to do is just give a shout out to the Glacier Nordic Club. They've been busting their butts to try to get enough snow going so that we can skate the golf course. And we were actually able to do it for almost a full day. They've also been doing a really excellent job up on the big mountain trails. And then the and and with the Iron Horse and their grooming, it's been fantastic Nordic skiing up there, and it's world-class Nordic skiing up there. With that said, I'd also like to just remind everybody to please follow the rules. Dogs are allowed on the whole course, but they have to be on a leash until you get to the skier bridge at Haskell Basin Road if you're starting at the Big Mountain parking lot. They are allowed off-leash everywhere below there. I have been chased at least twice already this year, and it's not a good feeling. So I would just like people to follow the rules. And again, just thanks to Glacier Nordic for all the hard work. So thanks.
Thanks, Steve. And Ben, any comments?
No comments from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Rebecca?
Just wishing everybody Happy New Year, and hopefully it's a little bit softer. And Dana, thank you for the thoughtful card and gift. It was nice to see everybody's signature in there, too. And just thank you, council, for working through hard, hard issues thoughtfully. I appreciate working with you on on very complex projects and also for this this emergency in particular. Thank you for doing your work to get us here.
Thanks, Rebecca. And finally, Andy, any closing comments?
Just a Happy New Year to all, all listening and all that we work. It's it's glad to have this year behind us. Just have just one quick public works thing. And Craig, I'm not sure. I know it's not necessarily our responsibility, but those two major pottles I was in downtown today that are right by the parking garage there in the northbound lane on Baker are pretty gnarly. I've seen some people about lose most of their undercarriage oil pan and everything else that's underneath the vehicle on those things. And at night, they're completely invisible, especially when filled with water. So I don't know if we have to have somebody out there throwing dirt in them all the time or not. But that might help some people out.
Yeah, that is part of Baker Avenue that MDT maintains. Typically, we notify them and give them a couple of days. And if if there's no response, we'll we'll fill them. I think we're on day two. I think we notified them Friday. So if they're not out there tomorrow, I'll make sure the city crew takes care of them.
Yeah, they're pretty ugly and hard to avoid them in some some cases, so.
Yep.
That reminds you of the early nineties?
I would say ironically, the the worst pothole, I think, is actually in the patch for the water main connection to City Hall. So to some extent, it probably is our responsibility. We'll we'll make sure we, I think what we'll probably do is just go ahead and have the city crew replace that patch with hot mix next summer. But we'll we'll attend to it throughout the winter.
Yes, it is in the patch. That's the worst one.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Craig. I have nothing further tonight. Dana, anything additional from your end?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, everyone. Happy New Year, and we are adjourned. Thanks very much.